The time has come for the March 2nd, 2020 Regular City Council Meeting. Roll call, please.
Alderman Mozio.
Aye.
Alderman Kirkwood.
Aye.
Alderman Newsome.
Present.
Alderman Turner.
Present.
Alderman Mavera.
Present.
Alderman Florian.
Present.
Alderman Taylor.
Present.
Alderman Bolton.
Present.
Alderman Seager.
Present.
Mayor Cunningham.
Present.
You have a corner.
All right. To lead us in dedication, it will be Pastor Eugene Edwards from a place called Home Church located at 724 South Genesee Street. And immediately followed that to lead us in the pledge is Ms. Katie Schrader. All rise. Pastor?
Romans 13:1. Let every person be subject to the governing authorities, for there is no authority except from God; and those that exist have been instituted by God. Let us pray. Gracious God, most heavenly Father, we thank you for these proceedings. We thank you, Lord, for these offices. We thank you for the mayor. We thank you for all the citizens of this great city of Waukegan that you have set your heart upon. We pray the light of your guidance would lead, guide, protect, and keep us as we proceed further. In Jesus' name, amen.
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 To the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We're at 1C, Mayor's comments. United Way. I want to start by thanking the United Way of Lake County for organizing their annual volunteer reading opportunity with schools for Dr. Seuss' birthday. As you can see, I was there. I would put it on like I had it earlier. When I was reading to the kids, this morning I had a blast reading to the kindergarten school students, kindergarten students at Glen Flor Elementary School. And I can't wait to participate next year. They're always taking names for those who come and do special reading to our elementary school kids. This year, when they first started, they were in one school. Now they're in around six of our elementary schools throughout Waukegan. Landlord training. Please spread the word. On Saturday, March 28th, from 9:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m., the Waukegan Police Department and the Waukegan Building Department will hold a training program to provide landlords a guide regarding things such as tenant screening, code compliance, background checks, and more. Please contact Sergeant Craig Neal at 847-596-5472, or the Building Department, 847-625-6868 for more information. Demolition. The city building commissioner and corporate council have been directed to be very aggressive toward addressing, abandoning nuisance and eyesore properties. The state of Illinois requires a whole bunch of steps that make this process longer than we'd like to. But if we don't do it the correct way, use a necessary party's title search and other required steps, we're liable to pay the property owners, which unfortunately has happened previously. Nevertheless, we will continue to take the necessary step to rid Waukegan of these problem properties. We're going to take down 314 Beasley, 912 South Martin Luther King, 830 North Avenue, 403 South Elmwood, and we have another 15 identified that we will address as well. Alderman, I know, I think in the 8th Ward, during the 8th Ward meeting, there was one such property. I think it's, so I'm not going to give the number address, just the street, on the 2,000 block of Herbert. I know this has been a sign of just frustration, not only to you, but to the city, but also to specifically Doug and code compliance. But we recently found that the property kind of changed hands, or potentially could change hands. So it's kind of delayed us a little bit. But we're going to be, and this is a directive from me, we're going to be very, very aggressive with getting these properties. So that means some of you are going to be getting some complaints from those who own these properties. But we cannot allow for these, you know, these properties to sit as long as they have. I know the city of North Chicago has a program, or has some properties in line. And we're also going to be moving toward commercial properties. More specifically, I think the address is around 10 or 12 South Genesee Street, which is next to the big old Waukegan building. They're doing nothing. They're doing absolutely nothing. Part of the budget process this year will be to have the Building Department have as a line item, a part of their budget, so we can start addressing some of these commercial properties as well. As you all know, we have the IDA grant that has been very fortunate since 2008. But that's going to run out soon. So we're trying to get as many properties we can to be demolished in our community, so some of these neighborhoods are not left with dilapidated properties that ruin communities. Sustainability survey. During the public works committee today, you received an update from our AmeriCorp fellow about Waukegan's first ever sustainability plan. As part of this great work, we are asking the public to please fill out our short sustainability survey located on the city's website and on our social media. We thank you for your participation and look forward to your survey feedback. The ever-so-popular city stickers. Once again, we remind you that the city stickers are on sale. If you renew before March 31st, you can purchase the early, you can purchase for the early bird special. I don't know what the early bird special is, but cheaper. That's the early bird special. Now seniors, our seniors are still at the, I think, five, four? Five, four dollars? Four dollars for the first vehicle, I believe. Four dollars, I'm 53. I'm getting there. Alderman Newsome, not yet. So, and please remember to purchase your pet tags. Don't forget our pooches and cats, and that's it. We don't do the other exotic animals. Census. As another reminder to our residents, you're going to receive a letter in the mail around March asking you to fill out the census. You can complete the census online or by phone, but we need, we simply need your help with this process. As you all know, the census tract determines our population in our communities, also determines the amount of financial assistance that we receive from our federal and state governments. As I said before, our number right now is around 89,000 and some change. We service well over 100, about 120,000 people in our community. That's a huge gap between what we are actually accounted for versus what we service. That comes from our police, fire, public work, city services, school district. We need your help. We might have differences on everything that we do, but on this issue alone, we need your help. Please fill out the census. Thank you. Upcoming events. District 16's Trap Auditorium is busy this week, is busy next week with high school spring concerts, March 10th through the 13th. Lake County Concert Association hosts the Maxwell Quartet on March 14th. The Waukegan Symphony Orchestra Magnificent Suites Concert on March 15th. The Genesee Theater, America with the Buckingham's on March 6th. The Magic of Bill Blagg on March 7th. The Comedy of Bumping Mics on March 14th. I heard that's a very popular committed group. Also want to congratulate CLC Lake Shore Campus for the, for an awesome salute to gospel event this past weekend, which I might say was sold out, everyone. All 24 hundred seats. Yeah, it's a big clap. Thank you. They did a fantastic job of promoting, along with the city of Waukegan helped out with that. And because of all of your help out there in Waukegan land, it was sold out in what a magnificent time that people had. We're probably going to have those pictures up on the website that we took. It was great to see the Genesee Theater, not only that full, but with that much spirit in the room. So congratulations to them, and hopefully we'll be able to do that all the time. Storytelling. Storyteller. A riveting performance of ancient African-American storytelling will be at Dandelion Gallery on Friday, March 7th. Tickets are available by calling 847-897-8552. Three Brothers Theater hosts the world premiere of conversation about an empty suite, starting Friday, March 13th, and running Fridays and Saturdays through April 4th. Finally, here is all the bragging rights. The 19th Annual Juarez Cup, Waukegan Fire Department versus Waukegan Police Department in a charity basketball game. The game is Friday, March 13th, at the Waukegan High School campus, the Dog Pound. All proceeds go to Special Recreation Services of Northern Lake County and the Waukegan High School Athletic Booster Club. Which time is that? It starts at 6:00, Chief? We're checking it out. But I think it's, I think it's 6:00 o'clock. Who's got the cup from last year? I got it, yeah, 6:00 o'clock. Be there at 5:30. It's a long line. Going to be there. No, everybody come on. It's a nice time. I was going to play. Somebody's laughing at me. I was going to play. Unfortunately, I have to go and watch some softball. My youngest daughter Samantha is at tournament time. So I, there goes that. All right. Presentation. Let me give this to Janet to read. But we are going to ask Judy, come on up over here while Janet reads this. The Waukegan community has been lucky to have had an employee of Bayside Terrace for the last 29 years. She has been an amazing member of Waukegan community and has done an amazing job, for example, running the annual Bayside Terrace Mini Olympics for the last 25 years. Let's give her a big old clap, everybody.
Waukegan, City of Progress, Illinois, does hereby present Judy Caston, this Waukegan Proud Award, for your 29 years of faithful and dedicated service at Bayside Terrace, and for your strong sense of personal integrity and compassion for the people that you serve. Presented on March 2nd, 2020, signed by Janet Kilkelly, City Clerk, and Mayor Sam Cunningham.
And she told me to mention, because she brought her own cheering squad. All right, all right. There it is. All right. We're going to go in the middle. Let me take a nice picture over here. Congratulations. You are so special. We had two made up for it. Judy, I can't say we won on behalf of the members, all the ordinary citizens of this great community, the Lord's court, the special community of Bayside Terrace. You have just poured your love into all of them, and they know you by name. I know you're going to be missed, but I hope you replace your understanding, shoes and everything. Thank you very much, and here's your Waukegan pride. Little bit more? A little bit more. Okay, one, two, three, smile. One more. Should we get the cheering section up here? Yeah, cheering section, guys. Full cheering section, come on up. This is the hubby. Here it is. You've got hubby, kids, hot buncles. Everybody. Best friend, childhood friend, right here. All right. Well, why are you just here now? One, two, three, smile. One more. Awesome.
He was counting.
Right here, we bring it down for you.
I just want to thank the mayor and everyone for this honor. And I'm so honored to be able to work at Bayside Terrace and to be able to work with our clients and help them have a quality of life that they deserve. And I want to thank the city of Waukegan, because they've always been wonderful. This is actually, I finished my 29th year, and I'll be there one more year, 30 years, and I'm kind of going to see what else the future has for me. But I just want, I'm very proud, I use that word too, I'm very proud to be honored by this. So thank you very much. And I also want to give credit, not just to my entourage, but I am, for standing so tight with me and my husband, my children, who flew from Pittsburgh and Kansas City tonight for this too. But I also always say, I'm a woman of faith, and I give the credit to God.
Amen.
Thank you.
All right, now Judy, you have to tell my mom, who knows her, that you forgot to call, not me. All right. Thank you very much. Thank you, family. If you choose to exit now, you can go ahead. It's no problem. We're going to get into city business. Thank you very much for coming. Safe travels back home, son and daughter, all right? All right. Thank you too, Ms. Katie, for leading us in the pledge. Take care, sir. All right. Resolutions, proclamations, presentations, appointments, there being none. Next item, item three, audience time. Madam Clerk?
We have a few people here to speak tonight. You have three minutes. I'm going to name off the first five names. Brother Blanks, Debbie Hansen, Calvin Mathis, Rob Prose, and Margaret Carrasco. Just go ahead and go to the east side of the room. Brother Blanks, Debbie Hansen, Calvin Mathis, Rob Prose, and Margaret Carrasco. Please state your name, sir.
Brother Blanks. Black Abolition Movement for the Mind. I want to address transparency and accountability through police body cam as it relates to the case of Avion Cotton. If y'all can recall, the last city council meeting, I extended to you all what we considered as our list of standing demands. And there was one particular piece that I addressed as to where the mayor had stated in a previous News, Lake County News and article, that, you know, you was considering taking these things into consideration of some changes that would be made as it relates to that. And I expounded last week that on that particular, one of those issues on the paper that I gave to you, was to consider a town hall meeting with the community as it relates to whatever changes that you are considering. Because, you know, we have concluded that whatever changes that you're looking to make on behalf of the community, that the community should be included and to have some input in those changes. I think that it's always best when you're making changes on behalf of the constituents, if the constituents are allowed to have some input on such changes. Particularly something as important as transparency and accountability. And much too often in the past, the community have not been afforded to opportunity to have input on these type of things. So I heard one of the Aldermen say that she think that it would be a good idea in efforts of having community outreach and to have in such a case. So, you know, I'm not looking for you all to speak to the legal aspect of what we would be having in court in April on the 23rd, but it would be nice if you would consider during Alderman's time, if you could address as to what you may think, if that is appropriate or not, if that's something worth considering. A town hall meeting, outreach into the community, so they can have community, they can have some input, not only on that issues, but other issues as it may relate to the community. So, you know, just something to take into consideration as we moving forward, so the community can feel that they have some input in whatever changes that is going to be made, particularly on their behalf. I hope that's not asking too much. Thank you.
Thank you, Brother Blanks. Debbie Hansen?
I am standing. My name is Debbie Hansen. I am part owner of Lucky Jack's Gaming Cafe in Waukegan. I'm here with my partner, my brother, Pat Arnold, and we are here to talk about the approval of the Six gaming machine. We were originally told a few months ago that the Six machine, the purpose of the Six machine was to help cover the taxes that were raised by the state almost 4% since July. They raised them in July. And this was supposed to help make up for the difference of the tax increase. Now, all of the surrounding cities, they already have their Six machine up and running. And it's only fair to have it approved in Waukegan ASAP. This is more revenue for the city. It's easy to do, just to approve it. And also approving this could help pay for salaries, and it could help fix a lot of the roads in Waukegan. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Calvin Mathis.
Thank you. No problem. Well, clock is out. I'm going to depend on you. My name is Calvin Mathis. Here the last time, I didn't finish what I wanted to say. But it's only fitting that I read a poem. Says, "First, they came for the communists, and I did not speak up, because I was not a communist. Then they came for the Jews, and I did not speak up, because I was not a Jew. Then they came for the trade unionists, and I did not speak up, because I was not a trade unionist. Then they came for the Catholics, and I did not speak up, because I was a Protestant. Then they came for me, and by that time, there was no one left to speak up." Now, this is not, in no way, shape, or form, an indictment on the police or anything like that. This speaks to a system. And obviously, the writer of this poem got caught up. And if you do your homework, you can find out about this writer. And it doesn't, what I was trying to, point I was trying to make last week is that we can't take our freedoms lightly. Things can go south real fast and in a hurry. And what I wanted to say was, we have to guard our integrity. Me, I'm just a citizen, a citizen of Waukegan. You guys are public officials. We've got the chief here, all the department heads back here. Your integrity is really important, because once this thing gets out of hand, somebody's going to be writing another poem. What we need in every good city is good schools, good police, and of course, good citizens. Now, we on the ropes. You can, I mean, this place fills up when we had one issue. Then look, we got a scarce market. So citizens on the edge. Police, that's what got me motivated. Schools, kids running over the gurney. Kids have been robbed here. You don't have to go into these schools. Just go look at the outside of, I've been to Stevenson. That speaks for itself. Integrity. We got to have integrity. This situation, we've had two situations that's been brought forth to the city council. And I'm going to be honest, one, I just didn't give much weight to, and that's, to me, was a tragic accident. But the other one, I mean, the facts are in now.
Thank you, Mr. Mathis. Thank you.
We have one more session.
Thank you.
Be back. Thank you.
Robert Prose?
You can start the time now, Jen.
Go ahead.
I want everyone to get it first. That's why I said start the time. All right, Jen, I'm ready. Rob Prose, 1534 West Monroe Street. On October 7th, 2019, I came before council and submitted several documents. I'm here again tonight to submit one of them again. Since the city does not seem to want to do an economic impact study on the effect on the casino in our area, I may as well read the highlighted conclusion from Why Casinos Matter from page 36. Evidence from the health and social sciences suggests that the new American casinos are associated with a range of negative health, economic, political, intellectual, and social outcomes. For this reason, we view state sponsorship of casino gambling as a regressive and damaging policy. I would like someone to explain to me in clear detail why we're still pursuing this casino when most people know it will be a drain on our community and especially our most vulnerable. I have heard from numerous people why we have to do it, because it's all we have left. I would like, I would just like to know who I can come back to or talk to if or when this turns out to be a complete and absolute bust. Thank you. That's it.
Thank you. Margaret Carrasco.
ICE MIGRA was in town this weekend, doing their thing, okay. But the issue was that, as they were knocking on people's doors, trying to get in, they told residents that they were the Waukegan police. That's not good, because Waukegan police was not involved. Next, I have a copy of an email sent by city clerk, in which she disrespectfully states to Alderman Florian, "Could be an amnesia or blame disregard of events." Just for clarification, orientation is not training. So that was very incorrect and inappropriate. Next, I want to recommend to the city council to place a contingency on the company that's recommended for the CTGB grant construction. You know, he's a good person and everything, but however his standing, he is not in good standing with the state. So I want to make sure he rectifies that and make sure the liability insurance is enforced, et cetera, et cetera, as we always should do. And lastly, for legal counsel, I just want to request that you formally look into if City Waukegan 6th Ward Alderman, if 6th Ward residents have been deceived. To verify if the legal name of our Alderman is really what he states and ran as. Next, to check the Alderman's criminal record, and many aliases, if they exist, and see if he is really eligible to hold office. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. That concludes your public comment.
Well, thank you, everybody, for coming again. All right. Item four. Motion by Alderman Mozio II, by Alderman Turner, for consent agenda items 4A through 4P. Are there any questions to the motion?
I was held over. I was held over.
I was held over.
Aye.
I was held over.
I was held over for two weeks.
Okay.
There's a, and then there's a change to J.
Okay, so, let's do this. We get them on, and we make the changes there. So, I'm going to repeat. Items 4A through H and J through P. There's a motion and a second on the floor, and let's get an amendment to item J. Okay. It was its pricing, the dollar amount?
Yes.
What was the dollar amount?
$186.
$86,000.
Got to get the amount. Hold on. $86.
$185.
$185.
$185.
$185. Eighty-six, one-eight-five.
Eighty-six thousand.
One-eight-five.
Eighty-six thousand. Okay, there we go.
Eighty-five dollars.
Eighty-five dollars. All right. So, there's a motion, consent agenda 4A through H and J through P. I will read the...
Mayor?
Uh-oh.
Can I pull out G, please?
Items 4A through F, 4H, and J through P. Okay? All right. Motion to approve regular meeting minutes from Tuesday, February 18th, 2020. Motion to approve an ordinance certifying zoning calendar 2595 preliminary and final plateau, West Waukegan Industrial First Re subdivision at 33056 Washington Street. Ordinance adopting zoning calendar 2597 conditional use permit for climate control self-stored facility at 2700 West Belvidia Road. Motion to approve an ordinance certifying zoning calendar 2598 conditional use permit for solar, Valtech Field of 2820, 2028 North Butrick Street. Motion to approve resolution authorizing the mayor and corporate council to negotiate the Third Amendment to the Genesee Theater, at least to include additional properties. Motion to author, item F, motion to authorize mayor to execute an amendment to IGA between the city of Waukegan, Lake County relative to 14th Street improvements for a revised amount of $2,204,205.12 to be paid equal installments over a five-year period. The first installment of $440,841 due May 1, 2020 will be paid from serious 2018 C water and sewer revenue bonds. Item H, motion to affirm the building commission, building commission's execution of contracts with Dean Investments Howard Enterprise LLC package pilot construction, respondents to the public bidding process and individual amounts estimated at $83,334 and a total combined amount of not to exceed $250,000 for the purchase of rehabilitation services performed under the Illinois Housing Development Authority abandoned residential property municipal relief program, AAP, round four grant. Item J, motion to approve the city of Waukegan 2020 share Fountain Square of Waukegan Common Area expense budgeted in an allocation of $86,195 to be paid in the quarterly installments. Motion to approve vendor payments dated March 2nd, 2020 in a total amount of $1,229,413.14. Item L, motion to approve regular payroll dated February 28, 2020 in total amount of Motion, item M, motion to approve comp time cash out dated February 28, 2020 in a total amount of $631.42. Item N, motion to approve PBLC holiday buyback dated February 28, 2020 in a total amount of $2,350.46. Item O, motion to approve final payout name listed on the agenda dated February 28, 2020 in a total amount of $22,968.95. And item P, motion to approve all raffle sale applications. Any other questions to the motion? Roll call, please.
Alderman Mozio.
Aye.
Alderman Kirkwood.
Aye.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
Alderman Turner.
Aye.
Alderman Rivera.
Aye.
Alderman Florian.
Aye.
Alderman Taylor.
Aye.
Alderman Bolton.
Aye.
Alderman Seager.
Aye.
Motion by Alderman Florian, second by Alderman Newsom to affirm the CDBG Director Execution of Contracts with Integrity and Development, Inc., the lowest responsible bidder for the total combined amount not to exceed $48,500 of the purpose of rehabilitation services. Alderman, Alderman Florian.
There were some questions during the committee meeting about this, about the amount, and it had gone up from the original amount. And then there were some questions about the developer and whether they had good standing with the state or not. So, I'd just like to know if we've confirmed that this person is in good standing with the state and that this is something...
Ma'am, before any of the particular community development block grants are going out, they must be in good standing with the state with the federal government. Before they are executed, those things will, will have taken place. I assure you that. And that has not just been with this particular one, but anyone. That's just part of their, their process. That we, actually, we are not even allowed to even pay them out if they're not.
Okay.
Okay. Yes, ma'am. So, sure, we'll make sure that happens. Make, just, you know, when we, I'm sorry, Larissa, I shouldn't, I'm saying Larissa. Ms. Garland, before we do that, is make sure we get that and give that to Alderman Florian, just so she'll have it for her record. Sounds good, Alderman?
Yes.
Sounds good. All right, there's a motion, a second on the floor. Any other questions? Roll call, please.
Alderman Mozio.
Aye.
Alderman Kirkwood.
Aye.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
Alderman Turner.
Aye.
Alderman Rivera.
Aye.
Alderman Florian.
Aye.
Alderman Taylor.
No.
Alderman Bolton.
Aye.
Alderman Seager.
Aye.
Motion's passed and carried. Right. Items five, there being none. Item six, there being none. Item seven. Motion by, motion by Alderman Florian, second by Alderman Rivera. Motion to approve resolution authorizing execution of collective bargaining agreement between the, I'm sorry?
Excuse me. I was held in committee.
Right. Yeah. I was held over. Okay. The motion on the floor, I'm reading the motion now. Motion to approve resolution authorizing execution of collective bargaining agreement between the city of Waukegan and Metropolitan Alliance of Police Chapter number 771, lieutenants. Any questions to the motion? Alderman Florian.
I messaged the corporate council early today because I had questions about this, and we didn't get a response until much later this afternoon, and I really haven't had a chance to go over the response. And I was wondering if we could hold this over to the next meeting, so I have a chance to look at it. This is the first we've seen of this. I mean, we get it on Friday at 5:00.
No, ma'am, no, ma'am. And I'm going to say this. We're allowed, you, the aldermen, all of us, can see in executive summary what's on Friday is what is released to the public. You had this probably, when was, I don't know when this went online, this probably went online early as Tuesday, Wednesday?
Well, I Thursday morning.
Thursday.
I think it was actually posted Wednesday.
Yeah, by Wednesday night, I know it was. Both of these were. Is there a question that we can clear up right now? Ma'am?
Well, I would, my question was about comparing it to the previous contract, so I would know exactly, since I was not an alderman when you signed the last contract, what the differences were between the last one and this one. Because we've been told that part of the reason we need to raise the tax levy is when we do these contracts.
Absolutely. Let's be clear.
So, I wanted to be clear what we were looking at in terms of what this will do to change our responsibilities going forward.
Well, right now, right now, the contract as a whole is similar to what the other bargaining agreements received from a standpoint of COLAs. Two point...
Two-point-five, two-point-five, three and a quarter, three and a quarter for the four years of the contract. And that's the same percentage as the PBLC got. It's difficult to try to compare this contract, which was negotiated, with the last one for the sergeants in particular, because the one involving the sergeants last time went through a prolonged set of arbitrations. It actually went through two arbitrations before it got finally resolved. And this, and there were some irregularities, if you will, in that process as a result of that.
So, ma'am, at this particular point, we're just approving exactly what we approved with the other fire department, patrolmen, lieutenants and sergeants. And typically, that's going to be the way it works on all of our bargaining units. Alderman Taylor.
Do we, when we negotiate the two and a half percent and stuff, do we look at what the, what's the word I'm looking for? The average wages for the taxpayer have gone up. Like, I believe like it's been like less than 2%, yet we're negotiating two and a half percent.
Part of our problem is that we're bound in our negotiations by what the arbitrators will award in labor negotiation, in labor arbitrations. The arbitrators don't really, and aren't supposed to look at factors like how much the taxpayers' average wages are going up. Instead, they look at comparables for other units of similarly situated public service employees. So, in this particular case, part of the problem here is that you have PBLC, which is a very large unit of union, and comparing there, they use that as an internal comparable, if you will, because the arbitrators will give great weight to that when they're trying to decide how much to award. And that's what happened last time, and that's actually how this three and a half got in here in the first place, because that was originally something that was awarded in the sergeant's contract when the MAP arbitration, second arbitration happened. So, this is something that we're, this should be the end of that.
Okay.
That's what we were really trying to get to, to make sure we were at the end. Now, the other thing is these contracts, the one directive that we followed particularly from the mayor on top of looking at the law, was also trying to make sure that the contracts were very similar in the way they operated. The grievance processes now track each other. The insurance processes are the same. The discipline, all these different factors now fall in line, making administration contracts significantly easier than it was because they were rather different.
Okay.
Your honor?
Alderman, I'm sorry. Alderman Taylor, was that it, ma'am?
Yes.
Alderman Mozio.
I'm not correct. This is the first time since I've been sitting up here that we have all, and you don't like to compare apples and oranges as far as police and fire and all that, but, because each job is a little bit different. But for the first time in my time, we have them relatively aligned, for lack of a better word.
Yes.
And that's taken, I've been up here 17 years, and it's taken us 17 years to get them aligned.
Yeah, that was one of the things that we've worked on a lot over the last couple of years, was, you know, each, and that was one of the frustrations when the mayor first asked me to help, help with the city, was looking at each, you had to memorize each contract, and God forbid that you, that you tried to apply the PBLC rules to the MAP, to the Teamsters, and none of, none of the things matched up, and it was real easy to make mistakes.
Yeah.
As a result, I think we've clarified that quite a bit.
Correct. Thank you.
One quick question, ma'am.
Alderman Taylor. Sorry about that. Thank you, Alderman Mozio.
There's not a lot of officers involved here because, what is it, 23 or something like that?
The lieutenants.
Seven, eight, nine, four, I think, or five, is it? Something like that?
I don't know the exact number.
I think we're down to five lieutenants, yeah.
Yeah.
Five lieutenants.
It's a small amount. What impact will that have on next year's budget? Do you know?
I don't have that directly in front of me, but I can get that to you. It's, you know, the biggest part of our police operation is patrolmen.
Right.
Once we really get those, that contract squared away, we have a much better handle on how we can handle with our lieutenants and sergeants. I think sergeant's 22 or 23.
Sergeant's a 17, I believe.
Seventeen sergeants, four lieutenants.
Okay, total of 21.
Eight items, eight.
Yeah, yeah. So, they're being bargaining, so we...
So, that's 21 out of like 152, right?
Yeah.
Okay.
Hundred buck fifty. One of the strategies when I came in is we must have all these contracts aligned with each other versus when they come up and when they expire. We were negotiating sometimes behind, and this is, I'm not saying that those, the bargaining units were doing anything wrong, but from a side of our, we're, patrolmen was one, then after them, we got everybody. My goal was to have everybody at one time. Now that we kind of have them more aligned with each other, we can better identify our financial obligations, where we want to go. And I've said this publicly, I believe 2% is the standard. That's my goal, 2%. And if there are exceptions to that 2%, and it could be where we look in a contract and, you know, part of these contracts, there's a lot of other small items in there that bring up that percentage. If we're willing to negotiate some of those, those other items that bring them down, that then allow us to then go up on the percentage, and so be it. But a lot of our contracts have a standard, one, one and a quarter percent standard. And I think if you go back to, on the other, on the other page, on the, on the other side of this page where it says, "Comp time cash out, PBLC holiday buyback." These are things are part of their contract, and they should be. It's not that they should, they should be, but that's part of the COLA, that's not a part of the, the numbers that we are proving today. Now, if we're willing to negotiate some of those where we can either reduce some of those days or some of those hours, then put that into the COLA, then that's a, that's a better way of handling these contracts. But we simply had to do, the first thing is get them aligned first. We're aligned now.
So, they'll all expire, or begin and expire on the same time?
Yeah, I think around 2021 to 22, 2021, 22. And it's been some, you know, on the, on the bargaining units, they're beginning to understand the temperature of 2% because that's where we at CPI-wise. To your point of, of our residents, those who work throughout corporate America or other, hey, three-point-something percent is very difficult to get in corporate America. I know at Allstate, that was a, beyond a gift. The average was 2% across the board. I believe that we should be looking at and managing to that 2% rule. And we go from there. And if things get better where we can do that, and our, obviously, our goals and objectives from the police department standpoint, even the fire department and public works, we would like to start incrementally adding more bodies to those, those departments, which we will need. Specializing some of our units from traffic, our traffic union, bumping up our neighborhood policing, which supervisors there, these are the things we are going to be leading to. But it can't happen until we get a better handle financially, to your point, Alderman Taylor, what is it going to cost us? And we can't wait to budget time. We have to do it levy time. And that's just where we at. That's, that's how you operate cities, counties, states, and national governments. And we are, I think we're at, we're in a good pace here. It's taken us a long time in order to get there. There was some mistrust, and it should have been, but I think we're building those relationships that we can disagree to agree to move our community forward, and that's the goal. And one way to do that, well, the only way to do that is through our labor contracts. That's 78, almost 80% of our expenses. So, that's where we at. So, Alderman Florian, hopefully that's answered your question, but we'd like to get these moved, moved past, and so we can, you know, begin, you know, to talk about, and I'm honest with, we got to start, really start talking about the contracts again in about another, maybe, six months. maybe six months. That's just where we're at. Get to, get these things over and done with early. Now that those relationships are there, trustworthy relationships are there, so we can manage our operations from police, fire, public works, city services, et cetera, ultimately giving those services back to our residents. That's the goal, that's the mission. And as you heard it at your ward meeting, that's all they care about. All right? With that being said, there's a, there's a second, and there's a first and a second on the floor, we'd like to move on with that, ma'am, if that's okay with you. Thank you very much. Roll call, please.
Alderman Moseo.
Aye.
Alderman Kirkwood.
Aye.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
Alderman Turner.
Aye.
Alderman Rivera.
Aye.
Alderman Florian.
Aye.
Alderman Taylor.
Aye.
Alderman Bolton.
Aye.
Alderman Seager.
Aye.
Motion by Alderman Moseo, second by Alderman Taylor, to approve a resolution authorizing execution of the collective bargaining agreement between the City of Waukegan and Metropolitan Alliance of Police Chapter Number 285, sergeants. Any other questions to the motion? Roll call, please.
Alderman Moseo.
Aye.
Alderman Kirkwood.
Aye.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
Alderman Turner.
Aye.
Alderman Rivera.
Aye.
Alderman Florian.
Aye.
Alderman Taylor.
Aye.
Alderman Bolton.
Aye.
Alderman Seager.
Aye.
Thank you, Alderman, for your support on this matter, and I look forward to bringing you other collective bargaining agreements where we, we're gonna want to be at that 2%. Thank you very much. Awesome job tonight on all of our parts. Sergeant, lieutenants, thank you as well. Item, item eight, there being none, closing items, there being, I'm just kidding. Alderman's time, Madam Clerk.
Alderman Moseo.
Yeah, that sort of dovetails right into Alderman's times. I stated before, time, the budget time is coming up relatively soon. People that have concerns with the budget, now is the time to reach out to your Alderman or to Aunt Alderman with your questions and your concerns so that we can have a dialogue and not a monologue in four months. Much better to have a dialogue where you can ask me questions, I can find answers, we can go back and forth, and you can voice your grievances on what you think we spend too much money on, what we don't spend enough money on, and that, instead of when it comes to tax levy time, and you come up here, and by that time, it's, it's hard to change that course. So now is the time to have that dialogue. Budget is online. It might be a little confusing, if it's confusing, then call me or one of the other Aldermen, and we will try to sit down with you and go through it, because it is written, and, you know, it's not always the easiest document to look at, that's for sure. Okay? Now is the time to have that dialogue, not six months from now and have a monologue. Thank you.
Alderman Kirkwood.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Want to congratulate not only the Genesee Theater, but the College of Lake County and the city for their involvement in the Salute to the Gospel. It was outstanding concert on Friday, Saturday, rather. I thought that for the first time, I saw that particular theater jam-packed, not only was it sold out, but parking, as I stated early in committee meeting, we need to make sure that we get an intergovernmental agreement with CLC so that we can utilize all the parking downtown. And as Alderman Moseo talked about the budget, we want to realize that through that budget, we have street repairs, sidewalks, removal of trees, doing lighting, so when you look at that budget, you have to have an understanding about public works and all the other entities that we try to fund. Also, if you have concerns about things in the fourth ward, please let me know. Also, you'll be getting some more information on additional ward meetings, and also, we will look at some other items in the ward. Certainly, we know about Washington Street, the improvement there on Washington Street. We had an individual that came in earlier that was concerned about the lines on Washington heading all the way to Green Bay. But once again, we have to make sure that the weather is conducive before we try to lay paint on the pavement there. So give us a little time so the weather does settle in and stay steady at 60 or 70 degrees, then we can do some additional work. We'll certainly be doing some patching and paving in the fourth ward. Thank you.
Alderman Newsom.
Thank you. I'd just like to thank Mr. Hewitt for working diligently with the Morton Arboretum to get 150 trees. I know we had been trying to do that for about a year and a half now, and it's finally going forth. And kudos to them for setting up program and meetings. They'd be setting up some meetings at Public Works, the first one will be Monday, March 23rd, 10:00 a.m., presentation on tree planting and care. It's going to be at the Public Works Department, 10:00 a.m. on Monday, March 23rd, or you can come Monday, March 30th. Presentation will be indoors and run about an hour and a half to two hours, and allow for, to allow for discussion. I know I've, my ward was hit really hard when they took out those ashbore trees, and so I've had several residents that were requesting trees, and like I stated in the Public Works Committee, hopefully, we can work to get the correct trees into the parkways, because I know in past years, some of the trees have been there 40, 50 years, and they had started to come out, out of the, the roots come out on top of the ground and cause problems in, in your sewer lines and things of that nature. So I'm hoping that we can get the correct trees in the parkways so that we don't create those problems where we're raising the sidewalks and things of that nature. But I thank you so much for moving forward, it's been several years, gotta be at least 10 years since we've, you know, we've even had any trees to put in, to plant, so thank you so much for getting that grant.
Alderman Turner.
Thank you. I'm going to add to what Alderman Newsom just said, in addition to the trees that are going to be made available and, and planted in the parkways, there are going to be a number of trees through this same program available for planting on private properties, whatever the balance is between what goes out in the parkways and up to a remainder of 100 trees total. So if you desire to have a tree planted in your front yard free of charge, please contact your Alderman, get on the list, and then there's an application process and so forth and so on, but that, that's also available. Next item, I want to address and request the mayor and/or corporation council provide some clarity. I received a text and a couple other communications from a handful of residents in my ward, but I'm going to read one text that I received, excuse me. TIF should only be used for real estate that would not otherwise be developed but for the TIF fund, except for the TIF funding. If a project would still occur without the TIF, then it is not needed. When legislation enabling TIF was enacted at the state level, safeguards were put in so that TIFs would only be used to fund blighted property that would not be developed without an intervention. The criteria for blight are not strict enough and allow properties with significant value to be included in the designation. I don't think we need to help fund a casino that casino developers have stated they are ready to build, they have the funds, and so we were told, we do not need, who did not see this coming? So our implication is that we passed a TIF agreement or ordinance related to a TIF in order to facilitate the development of a casino, and that is totally inaccurate. The TIF we passed at the last, or.
opposed.
The allocation of a portion of the TIF that exists that we passed at our last meeting is for infrastructure-related repairs and enhancements specifically in, within that TIF district, and, correct me if I'm wrong, this is also applicable to the development of a, and a, and a southbound interchange or exit and a northbound entrance at Belvedere and 294 in the tollway, right? So, did I capture that accurately, Bob, or Mayor?
Absolutely.
Yeah. Let's, let's be clear. I don't know who has been sending out, this is very clear, wrong information.
Wrong information.
And I'm just going to say this again, and I'm asking the Alderman to join me, what Alderman up here is going to make a motion or a second to give money to a casino to be built from tax dollars?
That ain't going to happen.
It's not eligible.
Well, first of all, state, statewide is not eligible, that's, that's, but, and if it was, there is not an Alderman up here who's going to, and if I really, 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 really wanted, which I really, really, really don't, it's not happening. The person who's coming in for this particular project will be coming to purchase the property from the city first and foremost.
That's it.
Then move on to develop the casino without TIF dollars. I'm, I'm, I'm going to take it a little bit further, just so Emily get it right, no city dollars, no TIF dollars, no money coming from this body. That's final. However, as we move forward in that area, and we hope this is a problem, that we need to do some infrastructure improvements, bigger lanes, turning lanes, and I'm here to tell you, this is beyond the, the casino. This off-ramp going, for those who don't know, 94 going north, going south. We don't have an off-ramp to get off 120. If that was able to happen, that would help our, all of our customers, not just the casino. So when that does come, we've had some conversations with I.DOT in the tollway. We need to be able to bring our portion to the table. That's our goal. With those TIF dollars not coming from, not coming from operational dollars, that's the best way to do that, and it makes sense.
Yeah.
But whoever is spreading that bad information, wrong information, we're not looking to give, more specifically, casino. Alderman Taylor, Alderman Florian, Alderman Rivera, Alderman Turner, Alderman Newsom, Kirkwood, Moseo, Seager, Bolton, we're not looking to do that, nor am I recommending that.
Right.
It's not happening. We're not going to do that, period. But we are going to make sure that that area and all of the area is looking beautiful, inviting, and that's called investing in Waukegan, and we are going to do that. As long as I'm mayor, we're going to invest in this community. It's time. No more excuses about it. I was just at a ward meeting, and, 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 in the eighth ward, one of the biggest complaints was about what? Their roads, their sidewalks, their curbs, they're tired of it. Growing up as a kid, Ms. Bates, I see Ms. Young out there, Ms. Trotter, that Castle Crest area was the place that people wanted to live. I can't believe that some of, the way some of those streets look over there, I can't believe it. And that's our middle-class families, down Sheriden Road, down Sheriden, those are beautiful homes. They should, those streets and sidewalks should be the best in our community. And if we don't invest in what we consider, what others consider upper-middle-class a part of our community, what makes you think in, in some of the other areas that people want to live? It is time that we, that we have a conscious effort, that investing in Waukegan is a great thing, and that, as long as I'm the mayor, we're going to do. We're going to do it responsibly, we're going to do it with a, with, with a CIP plan, we're going to do it with the proper funding, with the input from the Alderman, and even, even you. But it has to be done, and no, and it's time out to say, I don't have money, I don't have money, I don't have money. Plan it out, execute the plan. That's what we're going to do in Waukegan. And that's just final, but this project here, we're not taking TIF dollars to do that, we don't need to. Listen, east of Green Bay, west of Green Bay Road has been really holding up the end for this community for a long time. Now it's time to invest back in it, and that we will. And that's just final, so wherever that came from, I hope you're saying it now, I hope it gets out there, for everyone that's in this room, let them know, we're not using TIF dollars to give to a casino.
Thank you.
Bottom line.
All right, thank you. Okay, in continuation, I do want to address a very serious matter that arose in my ward, actually, at the end of my block last week, and that was a significant criminal incident shooting, right? There was a, an exchange, as best we can determine, an exchange of gunfire between two groups in two different vehicles at, in around Grove and Jackson Streets. One person was injured, one of the bad guys was, was injured. Four are in custody, two are in custody up in, in Racine County, and we have two in custody here at the Lake County Jail. I raised this because I, I just want to assure the residents of the sixth ward that those individuals, they just happened upon each other as they were transiting through the ward, so there was no reason for them there, there's no, no house or, or site, or, it just, it was just a coincidence that they happened to see each other as they were traveling through the sixth ward, right? So no reason for them to be there, no need for alarm about any specific site on Grove or on Jackson or anywhere in the sixth ward. And I want to commend the officers of Waukegan Police Department, the officers in the Racine, Wisconsin Police Department, and the Wisconsin State Patrol, Highway Patrol for their efforts, and also the police officers involved in, down in Wakanda, where one of those individuals was taken into custody. It was a great team effort, it, they put the investigation together fast, they identified the doers and, and got them into custody very fast, an extraordinary team effort. So I just want to put our residents in the sixth ward at ease about that. I also want to again mention and thank the Waukegan Police Department, Community Policing Unit, as well as the Traffic Division. We are continuing to do traffic surveys or traffic audits, we're gathering data on speedsters and amounts of traffic that are transiting through the sixth ward in various areas. Many of these locations are being brought to my attention by residents in the ward, and we're continuing our enforcement efforts on city stickers and alternate parking, so again, if you're cited for violations of these city ordinances, don't yell at the police officers, yell at me, because I'm asking them to get out there and do it, and that's what they're doing, okay? That's what I have, thank you.
Alderman Rivera.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Just to echo what Alderman Turner indicated with the patrol situation, the neighborhood policing officers are very responsible, they're very responsive, and they're very, very, in my ward, very well-liked. When they see them coming, they know that, it's for a reason. I had a phone call, and they were complaining about cars being parked and blocking some driveways, they were also parking and blocking some mailboxes, which, hard to believe, there's a portion of, I think it's New York, that they still have boxes outside. Yeah, 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 I was very surprised by that, but, but anyways, I made a call, and in 15 minutes, there was already a patrol officer going down there and starting to give tickets, which was great. So thank you to that. A big thank you to Mike and his crew, we had a water main break, 2200 block of Linden this morning, it was spotted early, I don't know how long it was going on, but within 15 minutes, his crew was out there. I don't know how long it was going on, but within 15 minutes, his crew was out there and starting to take care of it. So kudos to that. Thank you for all the citizens that came out for this meeting and everyone that stood up and talked, and that's all I have. Thank you very much.
Alderman Florian.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. I'd like to echo what Alderman Newsom said about the trees. I'm super excited about that. I know people in my ward will be excited about that. I love trees, and I'm glad to hear this program is coming to Waukegan, and I thank Mr. Hewitt for his work in bringing those trees to us. As the mayor mentioned, I had a ward meeting last Thursday. It was very well-attended. It got pretty exciting at times. We discussed the expansion of the airport, and that was a very hot topic. So I have decided to host another meeting sometime probably in May, just on the topic of, of airport expansion, and get the people from the airport there to answer the questions. So I'll be scheduling that soon. As the mayor said, some of the other issues were road paving, parking concerns, code enforcement. We have some buses that run through Castle Crest that have been idling for very long periods of time on certain days. That's gonna be addressed, hopefully, and, and then some other issues, too. But in general, we tried to get to as many of the questions that people had as possible, and I appreciate everyone that came out to that. And if you have a problem that you, you know, you weren't able to make the meeting, please contact me. My number is always available, my email's available, so just reach out. And then one other thing I wanted to mention is the coronavirus issue. We need to be aware of this. Wash your hands, wash your hands, wash your hands. Just to give people an idea, the, the death, death rate for our seasonal flu is about .02%. So that means .02 of every percent of all the people that get the flu may pass away from it, and that's 60,000 to 70,000 people a year. They think, they're not sure, but the death rate for this, or mortality rate for this COVID-19, the coronavirus, may be 2%. That doesn't sound like a lot, but that's 100 times more deadly than the flu. So we're talking maybe 6 million people could die from this, if it's that deadly. So take this seriously, start planning for what might happen. All of Italy has closed their schools for a month, all of Japan has closed their schools for a month. Just be aware that this may turn into something that we all will be touched by, because I can imagine, if 6 million people die in the United States, we'll all know one of them. So thank you for your time, and have a good night.
Alderman Taylor. First off, I want to thank the preschoolers at North Elementary School today that I had the privilege of going with Women United and reading for Dr. Seuss Day. I was not lucky enough to only have to wear a band. I had to wear the bowtie and the hat and the gloves. But anytime you get to do that, that's, that's just icing on the cake. I want to address a little bit, I want to thank the Genesee Theater and the partnership that they're taking up with Three Brothers Theater. I think it'll really, really help this community and foster three brothers, and I think it's, it's a great effort and a great partnership for both of them. Town hall meetings. I think everybody here is willing to have town hall meetings. The problem with it is that sometimes we don't get the people that we think we're gonna get, and it makes our staff have to stay late and that kind of thing. I have the same problem in the ninth ward with ward meetings. You, you advertise it, and because I have so many homeowners associations, that they would rather me come to that than attend an actual ward meeting. So you kind of have to play it by ear, but I think everybody is open to working with having town hall meetings if we have the people that want to talk to us. I don't think any Alderman is opposed to talking to residents about things like that. No problem. Last, I want to talk about something that I've kind of done some research on this, because I've had a number of people watch our videos who complain that sometimes our city council meetings look like a three-ring circus, that people are talking out of turn and the whole nine yards. And in doing some research on it, I found that one of the best ways to handle some of that, and what a lot of the communities, including the Lake County Board, I believe, is looking into this, is having a parliamentarian run the meetings. And I think it's something that, on the city council, we should look at, is having that added to our people up here, because they would actually make sure that we didn't violate any Open Meetings Acts or anything like that. They're the ones who would know all that. You know, we have a legal council, but they're there for legal purposes, not necessarily for all of this other stuff. So I think it's just something that we should look into, and I just wanted to throw out the suggestion. And let's see what you think about that. All in all, that's it. Have a nice day. Alderman Bolton.
Yes, I'd like to openly just thank Public Works and my code inspector for every week cleaning up the first ward, mattresses and tires and just all kinds of trash. So I just want to acknowledge you all and say thank you. Also, I want to give a shout out to the College of Lake County for putting on the salute for gospel. It definitely was given in with the spirit of excellence, and it was definitely spirit-filled. Also, I'd like to acknowledge, there was also a Black Excellence Award Gala, and that also was put on with a spirit of excellence, acknowledging our business owners and our leaders, and I just want to congratulate you. And last, I want to invite everyone to an event, a street name change. It says, "The honor of your presence is requested in the City of Waukegan of Illinois. The honorary street name change in the memorial of Pastor Dr. Mary Lacy." A concert will be held March 13th at 7:00 p.m. at Greater Faith Church, 565 Powell Avenue. And then the ceremony will be March 14th at 10:00 a.m. at 642 Dr. Montluthi King. Everyone is invited. Thank you.
Alderman Seager.
I'd like to thank the Lyne School, which is over on Elmwood. I was invited over there for Black History Month with the kids, from 2 to the 5th grade. And it wasn't very long, but I enjoyed myself so much. Those kids are so talented, and I'd like to thank all of them. They have over 500 students in that school, and the staff also. It was a great time for me. I enjoyed myself, and we, you know what? They're our future. It's true. They are our future. These young kids, they, they impressed me so much. I just had a wonderful time. Our code enforcement, my code enforcement officer was with me, patrolman Andy White was there. I had a great time, and I want to thank the staff and the kids for all the hard work they put in, and believe me, they did. So I thank you. And I thank you all of you for being here tonight with us. Just be patient, we'll get Waukegan rolling. Thank you.
Motion to adjourn. What is it? Okay, motion by Alderman Mozzio, second by Alderman Turner to adjourn. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion's passed and carried.
[laughing][1790.78]